Now let us solve some of the problems on profit, loss and discount. Let us solve some of the problems on profit, loss and discount right now sir. We had that thirteen formulas. We understood that the thirteen formulas were written but we also understood that it is not that much important for our problem solving. Now we will understand why it is not that important for our problem solving. Everyone listen carefully sir and I am telling you at the start of the class itself first eight to ten questions. Question number one to question number eight or ten, they are all very basic questions and intermediate level questions but these are very high important questions. That means if you do not know how to solve these questions, you will face a lot of problems or difficulty in solving some other questions, right? Please pay complete attention in building your basics stronger, otherwise you might fumble. Listen carefully sir, I am drafting the first question, everyone please see the question. Everyone please see the question. Your question is. Your question is Prashant sells his watch for rupees one eighty at a profit of twenty percentage. What is that they have given in this question? Prashant sells his watch for rupees one eighty, that means selling price is given as rupees one eighty. Selling price is given as rupees one eighty at a profit of twenty percentage. Profit percentage is given as twenty percentage. Your question is at what price did Prashant purchase the watch? At what price did Prashant purchase the watch? They are asking you to find the cost price. Selling price is given, profit percentage is given, cost price we need to find. Very, very easy question but I don't want my student to go directly and jump to a conclusion that. Let me start using profit percentage formula, S P minus C P by C P into hundred percentage. Do not jump to that conclusion and keep on by hearting formulas. Everyone listen carefully sir, profit percentage is nothing but twenty percentage. That is the reason we discussed fraction to percentage from the last thirty minutes. Twenty percentage is nothing but one by five. Now, I already told you this statement, your denominator is always your initial value. Denominator is always your initial value out of cost price and selling price. Initial thing that will happen is cost price. That means the denominator five represents cost price. According to the fraction, according to the fraction, cost price is five rupees. According to the fraction, cost price is five rupees. If it is profit percentage, numerator is profit. That means numerator one represents profit. According to the fraction, cost price is five rupees, profit is one rupee. I took the pen for five rupees. I, I want to make a profit of one rupee. That means I need to sell this pen for how many rupees? I need to sell the pen for six rupees, then only I will have a profit of one rupee. But according to the question, selling price is not six rupees. Question says selling price is rupees one eighty. According to fraction, it is six. According to question, it is rupees one eighty. Six is becoming rupees one eighty. Six into which number is rupees one eighty? Six into thirty is rupees one eighty. Five also multiply by thirty. Five into thirty is how much? One fifty. Answer for my first question without using any variable or formula, I will keep solving all the problems. It is one fifty for my first question. Answer for my first question is one fifty. Kindly avoid commenting in the live chats with your answers unless and until I ask you. Kindly avoid it. If you have got the answer, you can cross check it right after the problem is completed and make sure that if you have done a mistake, please correct the mistake. Making the mistake is not a mistake, repeating the same mistake is a mistake. Kindly take care of it sir. I believe that first question is very clear for you. Cost price is one fifty. Second question. Second question. Now please see the second question. Your second question is Bhavana purchases ten articles for three rupees. That means it is given that a person purchases ten articles for three rupees. What is the meaning of purchasing? Purchasing is nothing but cost price. That means cost price of how many articles it is given? It is given as ten articles. Cost price of ten articles, it is given in the question as how much? It is given in the question as three rupees. It is given in the question as three rupees. It is given that Bhavana purchases ten articles for three rupees. Cost price of ten articles is three rupees. Next statement says and sells fifteen articles for four rupees. That means the selling price of fifteen articles, it is given in the question as how much? Four rupees. Find her profit or loss percentage. Find her profit or loss percentage. Now, all these basics are extremely important sir. I will come back to all these basic level questions in my difficult question also. Please underline my statement right now itself. Whenever you get a statement like this, whenever you get something like this, always express it in the form of S P by C P. Why S P by C P also you will understand in two minutes. That means second equation I can write it as fifteen S P is equal to four. First equation I can write it as ten C P is equal to three. I want to express it in the form of S P divided by C P. That means I will divide one by the other. If I divide five into three, five into two, so S P by C P will be equal to. If I cross multiply two into four is eight, three into three is nine, it is eight by nine. Sir, why did you express it as S P by C P? Because I already told you that, I already told you that denominator should be initial value which is nothing but C P. Make the C P come in the denominator. Now, the advantage of expressing like this is question is find the profit or loss percentage. Suppose for example, suppose for example, suppose for example, profit percentage formula I will use. It is S P minus C P divided by C P into hundred percentage. It is S P minus C P divided by C P into hundred percentage. This can also be written as S P by C P. This is nothing but S P by C P minus, C P by C P is how much? It is nothing but one, it is nothing but one into hundred percentage. If I substitute, S P by C P is eight by nine. It is eight by nine minus one into hundred percentage. Eight by nine minus one is minus one by nine. Minus one by nine is nothing but negative sign represents loss percentage. One by nine value we already know it, it is nothing but eleven point one one percentage. That means answer for this question is eleven point one one percentage. Answer for this question is eleven point one one percentage. But if you observe this particular explanation, I used a formula, I wrote one step for formula. Again, I simplified that in the second step. I substituted in the third step. Again, I got a value, then converted back to the original value. I wasted five steps in getting the answer as eleven point one one. That is the reason I kept on saying you that kindly avoid using formula to solve our question. How beautifully once you make it S P by C P, how beautifully within one step you can get the answer. Listen carefully sir, I told you very clearly that S P by C P is eight by nine. That means denominator is always your initial value, make the denominator as cost price. That means denominator here is nine, write down the same nine once again. Don't change the denominator, don't change the initial value. Same nine once again, please write it. Now see here, what is your numerator? Nine is becoming eight, nine is becoming eight. That means there is a decrease of how much? There is a decrease of one. Decrease is nothing but loss percentage. One by nine is nothing but eleven point one one percentage. Directly within one or two steps after you write S P by C P, you will get the value wherein you will get it after some steps by using formula. I believe that the idea is very, very clear for you people. Kindly avoid using formula is my only request for you people sir. Prakash Sharma, you can make the article equal, you can make a price equal, there are so many methods sir. I am teaching you one of the method which will simplify a difficult question to the most easiest way possible in my upcoming questions. I will definitely not think about today, I will definitely think about my future. That means with one question what I am solving, I will not make it simple. I want this explanation to help you in solving other difficult questions in a simple way. That is the reason I am teaching this method. You want to make equal article equal, you can make it and solve it. Both are same method sir, you can apply that method also. Now before everyone keeps asking. I will, there is a number here at the bottom, that is my number. Kindly do not keep asking me to add you into the WhatsApp group, I will add you into the WhatsApp broadcast. You will get an SMS like the way students in the WhatsApp groups also will get, do not worry about it. Vamshi, why we have to add in first question numerator and denominator? Why we have to add in first question numerator and denominator is very simple, right Vamshi? What is the first question? See here Vamshi, this was the first question. Profit percentage is twenty percent one by five. Cost price is five rupees Vamshi. Profit percentage is numerator is profit, it is one rupee. Selling price should be, you purchased a shirt for five hundred rupees and you are selling that shirt for your friend with the two hundred rupees profit. Will you add or will you subtract? You will add right? Profit percentage means increase, increase means add, decrease means subtract. Just keep listening, just keep listening, I will take you to the next level altogether. And I am still in basic questions. Basic intermediate advanced is what I want to make sure that it is clear for my students. Next question, another question of similar kind, another question of similar kind. Listen carefully sir, if the selling price of ten articles, selling price of ten articles is equal to, is equal to. Cost price of nine articles, find the profit or loss percentage. Selling price of ten articles is equal to cost price of nine articles, find the profit or loss percentage. I told you that express it as S P by C P, keep this S P on the left hand side. C P if it comes to the left hand side, it comes to the denominator. Similarly, can I say that, can I say that with S P ten is multiplied? With S P ten is multiplied, that is possible only when you keep that ten on the right hand side denominator. Thereby when you cross multiply it will become ten S P. Nine is multiplied with C P, so nine should be the numerator here. Now, again don't use any profit percentage or loss percentage formula, simple logic. Denominator is the ten, write down the same denominator, ten is becoming nine, ten is becoming nine. That means there is a decrease of how much? Decrease of one. Decrease represents loss percentage. One by ten represents ten percentage. Answer for this question is ten percentage loss. Answer for this question is ten percentage loss. One more question, let me solve it immediately sir. There are so many things that you need to learn if you want to master all these topics, what we teach in A and C methodology. That is the reason so many people will keep taking all online content. A parasarum buys oranges at the rate of five for two rupees. Buying is nothing but cost price. Cost price of five oranges is how many rupees it is given? Two rupees. Always remember make the right hand side as the amount value, whatever amount is given, that keep it in the right hand side. Right, that keep it in the right hand side. Is it echoing sir? Are you facing echo issues right now? Anyway, let me again put the audio cable, it just one minute does for me. Why to ignore few people who are actually having echoes? Now kindly check. See this next question sir. A person buys oranges at the rate of five for two rupees. Buying is nothing but cost price. Cost price of how many oranges, five oranges is how many rupees? It is two rupees. Always make the right hand side come as the amount value. If it is given as two rupees, that rupee should come on the right hand side. The other number should come on the left hand side in the bracket, simple way to remember. Next it is given that and sells them at the rate of seven for three rupees. Selling price of seven oranges is how many rupees it is given? Three rupees. Find the profit or loss percentage. This is exactly similar to your second question what we discussed in case of Bhavana problem, there is no difference. Exactly similar to that question, the way of asking the question is different. In this question, they are giving some rate and other things for you to confuse but please do not get confused. Express it as S P by C P. Seven S P is equal to three, five C P is equal to two. S P by C P, S P by C P is nothing but, S P by C P is nothing but cross multiply. Five into three is fifteen, seven into two is fourteen, it is fifteen by fourteen. The meaning of fifteen by fourteen is denominator is initial value fourteen. Write down the same fourteen in the denominator, fourteen is becoming fifteen, that means there is an increase of one. Increase represents profit percentage. One by fourteen is one by two into one by seven. One by seven is fourteen point two eight. Half of fourteen point two eight is seven point one four percentage. Answer for this question is seven point one four percentage. I believe that the idea is very, very clear for you people. I believe that the idea is very, very clear for you people sir. Pallavi Shekhar, this class has already been uploaded when I took some months before. It is already uploaded in the app. If it is not uploaded, it will be uploaded soon, do not worry about it. That is the reason I am saying each and every two hundred plus students who are watching this video. Every viewer who is an enrolled student will have an added advantage. What is that biggest advantage? The same class in the next few days you can watch it, not once, not twice, not thrice, unlimited number of times. And there are so much of content which has already been added and you can keep watching all these things any number of times, any point of a time, anywhere in the globe. And that is the beauty about studying from A and C methodology. And you know the fact that the methods what I teach, methods what A and C teach will be superly unique. It will be superbly unique sir, completely different, you will see a difficult question being changed in a most easiest way possible. And that is the reason so many people will usually take it. Pallavi, I believe that I have answered your question ma. I hope the idea is clear for all the students. I hope the idea is clear sir. Next question. Next question, just give me a minute sir. Next question. Okay, now see here. Now please see the next question. You remember we discussed about margin percentage, one or two easy questions before we move on to some other questions. Question is if the profit percentage is sixteen point six seven percentage, profit percentage is sixteen point six seven percentage. Sixteen point six seven is one by six, I already explained in fraction to percentages conversion. Find the margin percentage, find the margin percentage. Now, profit percentage definition I told you that I am telling you how much profit I am getting with respect to cost price. That means cost price is nothing but six rupees, profit is nothing but one rupee. So selling price should be seven rupees, right? Selling price should be seven rupees. Margin percentage definition is I am telling you how much profit I am earning with respect to selling price. That means profit is nothing but one rupee, selling price is nothing but seven rupees. So margin percentage is one by seven which is nothing but already thought as fourteen point two eight five seven percentage. Very, very easy to learn once you understand all the basics which are taught earlier. Similarly, let me reverse this question right now. What is this reverse question? Margin percentage is thirty seven point five percentage. That means margin percentage is profit upon selling price. It is thirty seven point five which is three by eight, right? Which is three by eight, that means profit is three rupees, selling price is eight rupees. What should be the cost price? I purchased the pen for some money, I want to have a profit of three rupees and therefore I sold it at eight rupees. So I should have purchased it at five rupees. If I purchase a product at five rupees and then sell it at eight rupees, then only I will have three rupees profit. But they are asking you find the profit percentage. Profit percentage is nothing but how much profit I am getting with respect to cost price. Profit is three, cost price is five, three by five is sixty percentage because one by five is twenty percentage. Very, very easy way of solving questions, do not worry. I will keep taking some questions which will actually make you realize the definition of markup, market price, discount, all those things in my next few problems. Just keep listening sir, there is a flow towards the class, let us respect that flow, then only we will understand it better. I hope the idea is clear. Raju, it is not difficult to identify fraction to percentage, it is difficult for you right now because that is the first time you heard it from my class. If you have practiced that from so many years, that would have been a cake walk for you right now. But having said that, do not delay anymore. We have already delayed our success so many things, so many times. Let us not delay anymore and say that and we will say to ourselves that it is me who will take care of my life. Let me start slogging, let me take care of all the things that need to become successful. Start working towards whatever is required to crack your examination. It is difficult, it is difficult but having said that, this will not be difficult if you practice. Sandeep Kumar, sir, this is old problem, for you it is old problem Sandeep Kumar. But there are so many new students who are listening to my class, you need to wait until I take new problems. Because I cannot jump, I cannot jump to twentieth question because you are listening for my class who already listened earlier. I need to start from first question to nineteenth question, then only move for twentieth. Because other people also need to understand how to solve the twentieth question. If they will not understand how to solve twentieth question if they wouldn't have attended first few questions. So please have patience. Sandeep Kumar and other people who thought that these are some reputations of so many questions which had taken in the long past. In the so, so many months before I had taken profit, loss and discount, my sincere request. When you were the person who are listening for the first time, please consider other people also in that show. My request, don't rush it out, we will come. Have patience, have patience, have patience is the only thing I want to keep telling. Akil, please repeat, there is nothing too much repeat sir. Profit is three, selling price is eight, cost price should be eight minus three which is five. Profit percentage is profit is three, cost price is five, three by five is sixty percent. Very, very important question, please listen to this carefully sir. Now before solving this question, in all the problems what we are doing is we are having something called as percentages. Now what is the meaning of percentage? Percentage is something divided by hundred, right? Something divided by hundred, that means this is a fraction, right? This is a fraction and I told you in my time and work class and some other topics also saying that. Fraction if I want to simplify, it will take a lot of time. It will take a lot of time to simplify fractions. For example, I told you in time and work that adding one, two, three is very easy and saying the answer as six. Same values one by one, one by two, one by three, if I ask you to add, you will take little more extra time compared to adding whole numbers. So whole number addition or subtraction or multiplication is faster than fractions addition or subtraction or multiplication. So what we will do is, I don't want to work with fraction but percentage will definitely come in my problems. That means by hundred will definitely come in my problems. So I want to eliminate fraction, what is the meaning of eliminating fraction? Meaning of eliminating fraction is I don't want this denominator, that means I should cancel this denominator. If I want to cancel this denominator, which number should I take here? I should take any multiple of hundred because hundred by hundred will cancel, two hundred by hundred will cancel, five hundred by hundred will cancel. Nine hundred by hundred also will cancel. That means whenever I get a question in terms of percentage, I will always start working from now onwards with respect to hundred. Because percentage is by hundred and I will take it my number as hundred. They both will cancel, we will end up solving in whole numbers little faster. Sir, what is the meaning of your statement? I will tell you, explain you with an example right now sir. Please read the question. Your question is a factory sells its product to the distributor at a profit of ten percentage. Who in turn sells it to the retailer at a profit of eight percentage? If the retailer pays rupees two, three, seven, six for the product, find the factory cost. Do not worry, I will read statement by statement. There are three people involved in this question. First person is factory, second person is distributor and the third person is retailer. Now what I will do is, your question says find the factory cost. That means they are asking me to find the factory cost. I will not take the factory cost as X like textbook takes, let the factory cost be X, not interested in that method. I will not take it as X, rather I will take it as hundred because I have percentages involved in my questions. I have percentages involved in my question. I will assume the factory cost as hundred, this is my assumption. It may or may not be the correct answer, this is my assumption. Now read the first statement. A factory sells its product to the distributor at a profit of ten percentage. Factory is selling at a profit of ten percent. Ten percent of hundred is ten rupees extra, that means distributor will purchase it at hundred and ten rupees. Now continue the question. Who in turn sells it to the retailer? Who in turn sells it to the retailer at a profit of eight percentage? That means this distributor will sell it to the retailer at a profit of eight percent. Forget about eight percent, what is one percentage? Ten percentage means after one place keep decimal point it becomes eleven. One percentage means after two places keep decimal point it becomes one point one. So it is one point one, that means one percentage is one point one. Eight percentage is eight point eight. That means distributor will sell it at eight point eight rupees more than hundred and ten. That means distributor will sell it to retailer at hundred and eighteen point eight. Distributor will sell it to retailer at hundred and eighteen point eight. Now can I say that, can I say that according to my assumption, according to my assumption, factory cost is hundred. According to my assumption, retailer is paying hundred and eighteen point eight. According to my assumption, retailer is paying hundred and eighteen point eight. But according to the question, retailer is paying two, three, seven, six. According to my assumption, one eighteen point eight. According to question two, three, seven, six. One eighteen point eight is becoming two, three, seven, six. Multiply by which number? Multiply by twenty. Your question is find the factory cost. Factory cost of hundred also multiply by twenty, hundred into twenty is two thousand. Answer for this question is two thousand. Suppose by chance, they are asking you to find the distributor cost, that also multiply. they are asking you to find the distributor cost that also multiply by twenty distributor cost is double two double zero I believe that the idea is very very clear for you people now this is the question for our understanding but the next question which is similar kind of question is for us to solve it in the most effective way using this method please see this question sir I definitely love to connect the dots between the problems let us first read the entire question a manufacturer sells to the wholesaler at a profit of twenty percent who in turn sells to the dealer at a profit of twelve point five percentage the dealer sells to the retailer at a profit of twenty percent and the retailer sells to the customer at a profit of ten percent if the cost of manufacturing the product for the manufacturer was thousand rupees find the price paid by the customer now first thing is first thing is every person who did not understand please listen to this question carefully first thing let us write who are the people who are involved in this transaction first is manufacturer second is wholesaler third person is dealer fourth person is retailer and the last person is customer I will assume the manufacturing cost as hundred this is my assumption everyone please listen carefully Jagadeesh Shiva Shankar everyone manufacturer I will assume it as hundred manufacturer sells to wholesaler at a profit of twenty percentage what is twenty percentage of hundred twenty rupees extra wholesaler will pay twenty extra and purchase at one twenty next who in turn sells it to the dealer at a profit of twelve point five percentage twelve point five percentage is nothing but one by eight what is one by eight of one twenty one by eight of one twenty is fifteen that means the dealer will pay fifteen rupees extra for one twenty and dealer will purchase at one thirty five now continue reading the question continue reading the question the question says the dealer sells to the retailer at a profit of twenty percent dealer is selling to retailer at twenty percent profit forget about twenty percent sir what is ten percentage of one thirty five ten percentage means from right hand side after one place keep a decimal point ten percentage is thirteen point five twenty percentage is two into thirteen point five it is twenty seven so twenty seven rupees more than one thirty five one thirty five plus twenty seven is one sixty two and the retailer to the customer at a profit of ten percentage ten percentage of one sixty two is sixteen point two one sixty two plus sixteen point two is one seventy eight point two that means whatever I have written on the screen right now I assume this value as hundred I assumed it as hundred because of my assumption of hundred only I am getting one twenty because of one twenty only I am getting one thirty five whatever I have written right now is everything is according to my assumption according to my assumption manufacturing cost is hundred rupees but the question says the cost of manufacturing the product for the manufacturer was thousand rupees according to my assumption it is hundred but according to the question it is thousand please listen carefully Jagadeesh hundred should become thousand hundred into which number is thousand Jagadeesh hundred into ten only thousand right that is the reason in my previous question I multiplied by twenty simple hundred into which number is thousand hundred into ten is thousand question is find the price paid by the customer customer also multiply by ten Jagadeesh one seventy eight point two into ten is one seven eight two answer for this question is one seven eight two the beauty about solving by this method is the beauty about solving by this method is let them ask any intermediate value if they are asking for dealer that also multiply by ten dealer price is one three five zero I believe that my students are very very clear with the logic sir I believe it is very very clear with whatever I am teaching you right now Prakash Sharma fraction method is the best method please move ahead with that method sir whatever you think that it is best for you follow it simple my role as a teacher is to teach you if you think that my method is best follow it if you think that your method itself is best please follow that ultimately our intention is to get answer in the least time in the lesser time which method is giving you the answer in lesser time you decide follow that method simple kindly comment in the live chat sir this question and the previous question I believe it is clear for you Jagadeesh I believe it is clear for you sir one eighteen point eight into which number is twenty or in simple language Jagadeesh two three seven six divided by one eighteen point eight it is twenty here also Jagadeesh thousand divided by hundred it is ten you should listen to my time and work class sir to understand the multiplying factor why one twenty for wholesale Shivshankar it is given in the question right manufacturer sells to wholesaler at twenty percent profit you had hundred rupees with you Shivshankar you gave it you gave that money to your friend with twenty percent profit that means you will ask your friend for twenty rupees extra compared to hundred what is twenty percentage of hundred twenty rupees extra right kindly share the YouTube link I am repeatedly saying this this kind of shortcuts more or less you will not find it in any other YouTube channels or any other textbooks and other things I hope the idea is clear sir kindly comment in the live chat next thing next question let us keep understanding sir and let me see how easily these all concepts will help in our upcoming problems on profit loss and discount Punit there is no difference suppose for example Punit suppose for example dealer is selling to the retailer at twenty percentage loss then it is minus twenty seven no difference I hope the idea is clear Punit next question see here sir some of the original questions of examination we are taking your question is by selling twelve articles again I am repeating by selling twelve articles Sakshit managed to make a profit equal to selling price of three articles find the profit or loss percentage let us understand carefully sir everyone listen carefully here by selling twelve articles that means there is a person that person is selling twelve articles by selling twelve articles that person managed to make a profit because he is selling twelve articles he is managing to make a profit and that profit is equal to selling price of three articles now the basic definition of a profit is basic definition of profit is selling price minus cost price now everyone think logically sir please think logically question says by selling twelve articles that means suppose for example I have twelve pens with me right I have twelve pens with me I want to sell these twelve pens think logically if I want to sell these twelve pens first I should purchase these twelve pens right if I only do not purchase these twelve pens how can I sell twelve pens for you that means logical common sense should say that if I want to sell twelve articles for you first I should purchase twelve articles that means if twelve selling prices are happening definitely before that twelve cost price should definitely would have happened that means by twelve selling twelve articles if twelve selling prices are happening twelve cost price also should have happened earlier that is the meaning of it by doing like this by this kind of transaction Sakshit managed to make a profit he is managing to make a profit and that profit is equal to selling price of three articles this profit is absolutely equal to selling price of how many articles three articles find the profit or loss percentage find the profit or loss percentage everyone listen to this carefully sir now can I say that this I will shift it to the left hand side this I will shift it to the right hand side it becomes twelve CP is equal to twelve minus three it is nine SP if I simplify SP by CP is nothing but equal to SP by CP is twelve by nine I already told you how to find the profit or loss percentage like this case denominator is nine right on the same nine in the denominator nine is becoming twelve there is an increase of three that means numerator is three numerator is three that means denominator is nine profit increase is nothing but profit percentage denominator is nine answer should be a multiple of eleven eleven into three is thirty three write down twice answer is thirty three point three three percentage if you are little smart what is the meaning of SP minus CP SP minus CP is nothing but one SP minus one CP by selling one article means I should have purchased that one article before that is the meaning of profit definition I believe that the idea is very very clear for you people Raj Suraj I already explained to who is that person Prakash Sharma if you think that fractional method is best please go with that method why are you again commenting simple right I am telling you there are two ways or three ways to reach the destination this is the destination this is your home you can go like this you can go like this you can go like this you can go in some other ways for example you decide which is the best way for you simple did I say that definitely you should keep applying the methods what I am teaching everyone is matured enough here please understand what is important or easy for you go ahead simple I hope this question is clear for all my students sir next question same method I will implement next question see here a person buys twelve oranges in a rupee that means cost price of twelve oranges it is one rupee that is the first statement how many should he sell in a rupee so that he can earn a profit of twenty percent he wants to make twenty percent profit for him to make twenty percent profit how many oranges should he sell in a rupee for one rupee how many should he sell it the question number of oranges that he needs to sell it the question right hand side of both the equations are same equate the left hand side left hand side is twelve CP here the left hand side is question mark into SP SP by CP with SP question mark is multiplied that should come in the denominator with CP twelve is multiplied that should come in the numerator now see here sir how will you find profit or loss percentage in our previous problem suppose for example this is an example suppose SP by CP is nothing but eleven by ten how were you finding profit or loss percentage in simple language how we are finding is denominator is ten write down the same denominator same logic to find the profit percentage in this question denominator is question mark write down the same denominator now how were you writing the numerator ten is becoming eleven that means there is an increase of one that one is nothing but eleven minus ten that means numerator minus denominator same thing I can do it here also that numerator is nothing but numerator minus denominator twelve minus question mark this is nothing but the profit percentage in the question also profit percentage is given as one by five equate both of them if you simplify you will get the value of question mark as ten that means he will buy twelve oranges in a rupee if he sells ten oranges for same one rupee he is still earning twenty percentage profit that is the meaning of this question I will keep implementing SP by CP concept in all my questions so that in my difficult questions in future also that question plays a very very major role in simplifying that question to a very easy extent next question next question now please see this next question sir again a very very important question please see this question your question is two third of a consignment is sold at a profit of six percentage and the remaining at a loss of three percentage if the total profit is five thousand four hundred find the value of the consignment now everyone listen carefully sir I will solve this question in two methods whichever the method you are comfortable you can pick up that method now your question is find the value of the consignment that means I need to find the cost price of the article I will assume the cost price I told you sometime before that I told you sometime before that whenever there is percentage I will assume the cost price as hundred right I will assume it as hundred that means the cost price I will assume it as hundred but think little logically why are we assuming hundred because if we assume hundred we will eliminate the method of fractions because fractions will kill a lot of time people who do not agree for my statement that fractions will kill a lot of time you can please start watching my time and work class you will understand the importance of solving in whole numbers that means I do not want to work with fraction that is the reason I am taking hundred but unfortunately in this question there is another fraction called as a two third that means first product cost price of first product is two third of the product is sold at six percent profit what is two by three of hundred two by three of hundred is nothing but two hundred by three another second product second product remaining is two third if it is taken remaining is another one third what is one by three of hundred one by three of hundred is hundred by three I am still getting fractions and it will take a lot of time for me to simplify using fractions my role is to eliminate fractions that means I don't want this three to be there in the denominator I already eliminated one fraction by taking hundred by eliminating that percentage by hundred and I don't want this three also to be there that means I want to cancel this three if I want to cancel this three what number should I take here I should take a multiple of three that means percentage is by hundred to eliminate this hundred I took hundred here so that it will cancel also to eliminate this denominator three I should take a multiple of three that means whatever the number which I am assuming it should be a multiple of hundred it should also be a multiple of three I will assume the cost price as multiple of both three and hundred which is nothing but three hundred sir will I not get the correct answer if I take it as hundred and solve it definitely you will get the correct answer but you will take a lot of time now see here sir two I am assuming the cost price as three hundred two third of three hundred is nothing but two hundred that means the cost price of first product cost price of first product is two hundred second product cost price is one third of three hundred is nothing but one hundred first product is costing two hundred second product is costing one hundred first product is costing two hundred first product is costing two hundred second product is costing one hundred question says the first product two third of the product is sold at six percentage profit that means here I am making a profit of six percentage six percentage means forget about six percentage what is one percentage of two hundred one percentage is two rupees six percentage is two into six that means I am making twelve rupees profit it becomes two hundred plus twelve two hundred and twelve similarly the remaining second product is sold at a loss of three percentage loss of three percentage means three percentage of hundred is three rupees loss that means it is three rupees loss from hundred is That means it is three rupees loss from hundred is, it is ninety-seven rupees. That means I assume the cost price as three hundred. Because of my assumption of three hundred only I am getting this two hundred. Because of my assumption of three hundred only I am getting this hundred. That means whatever I have taken till now, everything is according to my assumption. According to my assumption, according to my assumption, total cost price is, it is two hundred plus hundred. It is three hundred. According to my assumption, total selling price is, it is two hundred and twelve plus ninety-seven. It is three hundred and nine. That means according to my assumption, total cost price is three hundred. Total selling price is three hundred and nine. What is the profit? Profit is nine rupees. According to my assumption, profit is nine rupees. According to the question, profit is five thousand four hundred. Similarly, according to my assumption, cost price is three hundred. According to the question, how much they are asking? Nine into which number is five thousand four hundred? Nine into six hundred is only five thousand four hundred. Three hundred also multiply by six hundred. Three hundred into six hundred is one lakh eighty thousand. Answer for this question is beautifully it can be sold as one lakh eighty thousand. I believe that the idea is very, very clear for you people. I believe that the idea is very, very clear for you people. People who did not understand, you should message me in WhatsApp after the class and clarify sir. One problem, I will go and I will teach like a small kid. And still if you find a difficulty, I cannot keep repeating sir, I am very sorry. Because if I keep repeating, I will be in the same problem. If you have doubt, WhatsApp me, clarify it later. Simple sir, please do not expect me, I will tell you where is the water bottle. Go there and open the cap and drink it. Don't expect me to bring the water bottle and, and make you get into the, what do you say like, I will only make you drink it, that is not possible every time. Please do not expect me to spoon feed you so much. And if I spoon feed you so much, you will be in big danger. Because I will pass in my exam, you will fail in examination if that is the case. Please start learning on your own and I am teaching you very slowly and I am not angry on you people, please remember. I am not angry on you people, but I am disappointed in fact if, if even after teaching you so slowly, you people will again ask so many times. And that is something which is, which is that, that means you are lacking in basics sir. You should learn it, you should learn a lot of things, you should keep revising all my concepts if that is the case. Anyway, do not worry, I told you that I will clarify you in my WhatsApp. I did not teach, tell you that I will not teach you. I told you that let us not waste time here, clarify it later on in my WhatsApp, simple. Now see here sir, method two, your question says, two-third of product, two-third of product is sold at a profit of six percentage, is sold at a profit of six percentage. Remaining one-third of product is sold at a loss of three percentage, is sold at a loss of three percentage. It is also given that total profit is five thousand four hundred rupees. Question is find the cost price, everyone listen to method two. Can I say that, I know that profit percentage definition is, how much profit I am getting with respect to cost price? Now they are asking you cost price in this question. So cost price will be equal to profit divided by profit percentage, simple. Profit divided by profit percentage. Overall profit given in the question is five thousand four hundred. Five thousand four hundred divided by profit percentage. It is given in two parts, two-third is sold at six percentage profit. It is two by three into six percentage. And remaining one-third is sold at three percentage loss. It is one by three into three percentage loss, loss means put a negative sign. If I simplify this further, two, three into one, three into two, three into one, three into one. This is five thousand four hundred divided by two into two is four percent. One into minus one is minus one percent, four minus one is three percent. Three by hundred, that by hundred will go above. It is three into one, three into eighteen hundred. Eighteen hundred into hundred is again one lakh eighty thousand. You either apply method one or apply method two, you will definitely end up with the same answer. You will definitely end up with the same answer. I believe that the idea is very, very clear for you people. I believe that the idea is very, very clear for you people. Kamala Akar, Rohit and other people, simple, there are two things I want to say you people in this regard sir. Point number one, what I want to say is, it is our company policy, it is our company policy, not to disclose any videos outside. And every person should respect the policy of the company. Even if you go and work in some other company, if you do not respect, company will fire you, as simple as that. That is point number one. Point number two, if you are thinking that whatever the classes we are taking as teachers, we will have it for ourselves later, I think you are wrong sir. Why I am wrong, why, why you are wrong is, whatever the class we take, it will be auto-disabled. That means we will not even have any right to enable it or disable it. It is not in our control. There is a separate team working on all these videos, the team has made it auto-disabled. Right after I click on stop streaming, it will be disabled automatically. It is not only you, even I cannot see that video link later on. And I also cannot have access for my own videos later on. Believing my statement is completely up to you. I told it, whatever is fact, believing or not believing is completely up to you. Gopinath, for the proof of it, you can call me later sir. Now see here, before moving on to next problem, if you observe here, this question, there are two products. That means one single product is divided into two parts. See the next question sir, please see this next question. Next question is, one-third of a consignment is sold at fifteen percent profit. One-third is sold at fifteen percent profit. One-fourth is sold at twenty percent profit. One-third is sold at fifteen percent profit. One-fourth is sold at twenty percent profit and the remaining at twenty-four percent profit. One by three plus one by four, which is nothing but seven by twelve, seven by twelve is completed. Remaining is five by twelve, remaining five by twelve is sold at twenty-four percent profit. Your question is, if the total profit is sixty-two rupees, if the total profit is sixty-two rupees, find the value of the consignment, what is the cost price? Just now we discussed method two in my previous example, same logic I will implement. Cost price is nothing but equal to profit divided by profit percentage. Total profit given in the question is sixty-two divided by overall profit percentage is, one by three into fifteen, three into one, three into five, it is five percentage. Plus one by four into twenty, it is again five percentage. Plus five by twelve into twenty-four, twelve into one, twelve into two, what is two into five? Ten percentage, cost price is sixty-two divided by five plus five plus ten is twenty percent. Twenty is one by five, sixty-two into five, it is three hundred and ten rupees. Within seconds you will get the answer by using method two. Within seconds you will get the answer by using method two. The beauty about this method two is, please see the next question sir. This is where, this is where my students will be so smart and so fast in solving all the questions. Your question is, a trader sold one-third of his stock at a profit of ten percentage. One by third at ten percentage profit and remaining at a profit of twenty-five percent. Remaining two-third at twenty-five percentage profit. Find his overall profit or loss percentage. Overall profit or loss they are asking, they are not asking you the cost price. That means I don't need the numerator part in this case. That means overall profit is one by three into ten percentage, it is ten by three. Two by three into twenty-five percentage, it is fifty by three. Ten by three plus fifty by three is sixty by three percentage. Sixty by three overall is twenty percentage. Within seconds my students will definitely, within seconds my students will definitely answer the question. And I am telling you with utmost confidence that not only profit, loss and discount, any topic you take sir, just to keep listening to all my classes. Especially in arithmetic, I will take you to the different level altogether. Anil sir will take number system, geometry and other topic to different level altogether. And if you keep watching all the videos of AMC, the way you have solved an aptitude problem earlier and the way you will solve an aptitude problem left later after watching all our videos, there is at least minimum success to some next time, what do you say, improvements in your way of solving. And definitely, definitely I can owe for the statement. If I cannot, if I am speaking so confidently, that means there should be something in that content sir. Just like that, some, something I will not speak. So confidently in the public platform, just like that, we cannot speak like that. I hope that it is very clear.